And what I thought we should be doing is trying to understand what the possible uses are for this Mystic Oil Oral School property for the development document. Since we have to write up basically, you'll have a whole no specification for it. And I, what I like to do is get everybody's thought on what they consider might be reasonable use for the property. Just go around one by one and ask them for how, what they think from a high level, what we ought to be doing. And then go over the, the use table that has been proposed on pages three and four of the proposed zoning, chapter 6.5. I don't know if anybody has any additional thoughts. If not, we'll start and I'll just go down the attendance list as normal. So here, Mike, if you want to start.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I apologize for missing the last meeting, but I did watch all three hours and 35 minutes of it more than once. Actually, pretty engaging, I would say, anyway. Shows how boring I am. I would like to just comment on some of the things I heard at the last meeting and to, you know, just give you my thoughts as well. I agree with Kevin's comments about the process seeming illogical. How it seems as if the cart is in front of the horse. And we are, that is correct, right?
Yes, it is.
And that we are supposed to, we, I am being made to feel as if we, we have some sort of like expectations, but I, I don't have any expectations at this point.
Well, maybe can I interrupt for just a second?
Sure.
Maybe?
Yeah.
One thing to keep in mind is that we should be looking at this as to regardless of who's going to develop the area.
I understand. No, I heard you say that.
We want to be, we want to be independent of that. So if a particular developer starts develop or the process, he may back out or she may back out.
I, yeah, I agree with you 100%.
There that would support other alternatives.
I agree with you. I would also just throw out there that it seems to me that how we got here, I don't know. I don't think that this commission had much input. We did have one or two meetings initially that sort of, we were dealing with this main building and, and what we would like to see at it, but it was a wish list. And I, I take it from that wish list, every one of our wishes is being paid for with more apartments. And maybe we need to be honest with ourselves as to what we expect. Or I have to be honest with myself, what I expect and what the cost is not only in dollars and cents, but in quality of life. And I, my feeling is initially looking at this is that it's far more than I initially would have bargained for in what it's, how it will impact the quality of life for the people in Boulder Court, the people in Fieldcrest, the entire Mystic community and our town, our town in this area. I think it needs to, should be scaled back significantly. That's, that's it for me for now.
Anything else? Okay, Hal, what are your thoughts?
Oh, kind of a two-part because generally I think the, the goals in terms of what we thought we were targeting for the project, I don't think that was too far off. I think the kind of things we thought would go there, not as far as the numbers, but the kinds of things we thought would be appropriate there. And to have some kind of reuse and have some kind of apartments and have all of the things that we thought could go in. I don't think we're off there. I think we, that general thing. But I need to kind of get from the 10,000 foot high view to the 30,000 foot high view of the town of Groton where we want to be careful that we're not giving up on downtown Groton. And I say that just because I just kind of roughly put together, what's the total units in all of the ledges, La Triumph, Country Glen and Long Meadow Landing? Those are the similar units that are around. And that comes out to about 700 units, 780 units that are the ones adjacent to downtown Groton. So we're going to build a new, more than that housing as far away from that as we could possibly put it. Great benefit, I suppose, to Old Mystic Village that's across the bridge. But it's, we keep on saying, we don't want to make Mystic downtown Groton. It's, it can't do it and it, and it shouldn't do it. So just from a, a global point, if we're going to put some limitations on this, I think one thing we need to do is to make sure this doesn't become the housing for Groton. I mean, this will double the amount of, not double really, but it's such a substantial chunk of apartment living in Groton as far away as it could possibly be. So if our goals are in fact to make a downtown Groton and make it walkable and make it multi-use and have this kind of development downtown, then putting a thousand units in the northeast corner of town is exactly a step in the wrong direction. So as nice as I understand why there's all these great views and all these great things and we'll make it a, an island that no one else will notice until you're in there, but that's not the point if we're looking at all of Groton. So I, I think what we asked for was pretty good. I think, but we need to absolutely limit the size of it dramatically smaller, I'm afraid. And if that doesn't pay for what we'd like, then, then we can't do it. Otherwise we've taken a step backwards. If we had a thousand units out here, then how will we ever get another thousand units into downtown Groton to make it a vibrant community, which is what we want? And, and there's room for it and there's all these reasons for it. It just happened to have at the moment, it just hasn't been put together down there. If this development in fact had come up and said, hey, do you want to just develop downtown Groton? It would have been two thumbs up. Everything about it would have been perfect. And instead we're putting it in the, the absolute wrong end of town. So maybe it's an artificial thing we need to put into place, but I just kind of looked in at it. In fact, if we had put the zoning in place in that area that is in Fieldcrest, we would have had what, a couple hundred units? We wouldn't be talking about it. We'd be fine with that. Maybe it would actually have required an extra little strip center someplace so that there'll be a convenience store. And I don't know what else, a couple of things that they're looking for. Frankly, in the terms of the total numbers of people, of total units, I think that's closer to the numbers of things we, that would be okay there. These places that I mentioned, the, the ledges, the Country Glen, each one of those being two, 300, 200, those wouldn't make a dent on it up in that corner. That's plenty of room, two and three story buildings. We'd be fine with it. I think we would be fine with it. It wouldn't, it could blend right into the single family homes that are across the street. But to pack them in by the thousand, I think that's, that's going backwards from any right, I forget what the, the, the planning professionals call it, right planning where you, you put housing where the things are that you want it to be near. And this is the opposite. So now I don't particularly want to change what the goals were, but the, one of the goals is to not make this a new node that overwhelms downtown Groton. Cause none of these people would think of going to downtown Groton. It's not on the way to anything for them. It's out of the way to, they'll go to, go across the Old Mystic Village, down to Mystic or elsewhere. That's, that's my generality there.
All right. Barbara?
Yes, as we know, the town of Groton is made up of many neighborhoods. And there are problems with that and there are advantages to that. I think people that live in the city like that, people that live in Noank like that, Groton, Long Point, downtown Mystic, even Santa Groton has a shopping area. I don't see a problem with, I, I don't see it as taking away from downtown Groton to have another village type place. Yes, a thousand, 2,000 people up there. That, I think that's too much, but I think we've got a, a great property in the Pratt Building. We shouldn't have to rely on it being redeveloped based on a developer coming in, but clearly it's, it would be a huge project for the town of Groton to take on. I don't want to lose that. As far as the buildings up there, I am not as enamored, I guess, as some people are with the historic value of it, of them. They've just deteriorated so much. I do want to see development up there. But I don't see it as a, as an either or. I, I think it can contribute to the town of Groton. Even if it's tends to have created its own neighborhood. And I'm, I'm pretty open to anything up there, you know? I'm not talking about an Adventureland Park or anything like that, but, and I don't want at all open space, but there's plenty of undeveloped land there that will remain undeveloped or that we, I certainly hope remain undeveloped. So I think I'm, I'm pretty wide open about this. That though.
Anything else, Barbara?
No.
All right, Sue?
Thanks, Jeff. Yeah, a couple of thoughts. I was looking, speaking of top down at the P O C D and also had the recent zoning rewrite in mind also, but starting with the P O C D, I think it did touch on a few things for this area, talking about the significant habitat that was along the river, critical habitat. Also, the fact that it's, the area is physically sensitive to development, really from the southern border, Oral School Road above Boulder Court, kind of around on that ridge line up to the other corner. Keep that in mind. That's a diagonal type curve line. And it was also listed as still, this is 2016, of course, as part of the existing parks, recreation and open space. See the, the map, C5 actually had an open space connection from I-95 to 184 going through the town, going through the Oral School and then the town of Groton. It was never seen as a node or anything like that, but stays a few years ago. But the, the one I thought was really interesting was D-11 where there was something that I know had been requested as, as a map, and it was potential new dwelling units under full buildout. And when you look at the different places in the town where you could have full buildout and even the ones where it could be quite a bit, a lot of those courses aren't available anymore, but the scale that was used, the unit scale was zero to five, five to 20, 20 to 50, 50 to 100 and over 100. You know, it's as if, it was said by many consultants, we were close to full buildout, but it was like the scale was not 1,000 to 2,000 or over. You know, I thought that was interesting. And a project of the scale in fact could really absorb everything that back then we thought was even a potential to have units on it. So I, I found that interesting. But it's, I think, I mean, I agree with others who said, I don't foresee this should be a park. I think redevelopment would make sense there. But I think in the spirit and in the letter of the last only rewrite in current zoning, it should be the right development, the right size, something that does blend with the neighborhood and all these other things were in the P O C D, that sense of place and all that. Something that fits in so, and I also, I'm not particularly in love with any of the quote unquote historic values of buildings that are there. If it makes sense to start with a fresh slate, that could be the way to go. So I think I look forward to really as we work through this, I think there's a lot of potential there. But I do feel like we've been totally kept in the dark on really the important pieces of this and the alternatives. And I think it's good now to really think, and I'm glad we're doing this, of what's really, what's the right way to go in this, what makes sense? That's it.
Hey, thank you, Sue. Stephen?
Um, I think it all comes down, I, I don't think any of us has a problem with residential, even the mixed use residential and commercial, but it all comes down to density. And this question has come up before, Sue and I have battled various other projects. And when people, you know, try to cram too many people on a certain piece of property, it all, it all comes crashing down. And, you know, the, the impacts are not seen immediately sometimes, but then it's like, you know, crime or traffic or whatever it is. So I'm all for limiting, you know, putting a cap on the density of the project so that it curtails, you know, how many units they can put on a certain piece of land. And like we said before, the historic nature, I don't see too much as, you know, historic value in a smokestack and, and various other aspects of that property. You know, maybe the one building, but if it can be saved, but the Pratt Building is a, is a great resource. Taking a tour through that, you know, was eye opening to see how much is there and how much, you know, could be given back to the town. But I don't think we should sacrifice, you know, other aspects of the project to get that because we've done without it for so long. It's, it's not one of those things that is a, you know, crucial need for the town right now. So, you know, I would all be all in for putting a cap on the density and, and then we can finesse the, the uses later, but commercial and residential, senior living, all those things are, are okay in my. And I do have one question for Jeff or Deb, whoever it is. You know, when I was looking through the, the town agreement and, you know, when we were talking about careful, be careful with words and regulations and everything, you know, they talk about the project and the project shall consist of the construction of 700 to 850 multifamily units. I mean, is that legally binding? That's just a question. I don't know if you can answer it right now.
Here we go. John can answer it. I see him buzzing in.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So that document, that development agreement, and you know, there was an entire council meeting where we are, a number of council meetings where we talked about that development agreement. That was an agreement where there's an understanding between the council and the developer and there aren't things in there that are binding on the planning and zoning commission. So I, I think, sorry, I wanted to turn my screen the right way. So that's something that I, I want to, you know, put on everyone's mind as we move forward. There is nothing that binds you to 700 to 850 or to 931 units, you know? So that's not binding on the, the P Z C. And, you know, to kind of hearing a lot of good comments and feedback from all the commission members tonight. And this is all helpful for us as we've been trying to craft a regulation for over a year to work with you on this project. And, you know, we looked at it from a, a number of different methods and how we've approached this. And, you know, I've heard the, the question about the cart and the horse. And this has been a tough project from us, from our perspective, because it's a state property. We were trying to find a way to bring a developer to the table while also looking at the assets that we've heard from many people in the community about preserving the Pratt Building, the original, you know, Oral School building and getting the Pratt Building back up and running. And, you know, we can talk about some of this a little bit later after all the commission members have their questions, but you know, some of the density is driven by the reuse of those buildings. And it, the vision and the plan that's been brought before you is an option. It's not a do or die. It's not something that you have to do. And we, the staff are looking for direction from you in conversations that the town council has had with the developer that the staff has had, again, was trying to set a framework for the types of uses and things that could happen. And we've been trying to get feedback from the commission again, for over a year on this. And, you know, even going back as far as March of last year, when we were first talking about the 700 to 850 units, two of the commission members that tonight have spoken against the density told us that, well, maybe 850 units isn't enough. What if we want more units there? So I, I'm, again, we want to work with you, just looking for direction and some consistency with the direction. Happy to answer more questions, get into other things. I kind of went off a little bit there on a little bit of the background, but again, we are looking for feedback from you. So the development agreement, again, to just kind of come back to that, was a document to lay out a framework for how to move forward. That was really the true intent of that document.
Thank you, John.
Anything else, Steve?
No, that's it.
Okay. Kevin?
I'm sure. So I had a little time today, so I wrote down six quick points. So the first point is, you know, I'm not, I'm developer agnostic. I just wanted to say that. The second point is at our meeting this week, John advanced the idea of, based on a suggestion, not a criticism of the process, that he would provide a little bit more of a handoff. And I think he started that with some words tonight. I think it's very important because having worked for the massive corporations of the world, I would have loved a little bit more parallel input that the planning and zoning commission provided over the last nine months, but maybe we're asking that. I'm a newbie, so maybe we're asked, but I think that needs to be a parallel effort to this. And I think this is what John is asking us tonight. So as he continues to give us some input, I think that's very important as far as the guidance, just the answering even Steve's question tonight. My third point is, you know, while my home is in mysticism for the last 25 years, and I've seen the communities within Columbia, Maryland, Reston, Maryland, City Place in DC, in the small developments of Gathersburg, and they have become within a major town, just a terrific place to go. They, in so many ways, particularly like you look at Reston in Columbia, they have not negatively impacted the rest of the town. Instead, they have become much more of a place where people go and enjoy themselves and enhance from values to quality of life. And that's my point on the, on the big side, Jeff, which you've asked, is that I think we just need to make a great planned project. So I'm very much up for that and very open to idea. I think for the moment, we're focused a lot on housing and maybe that's where the money is. I get that. But I think if we, if we really take a strategic look at it and say, listen, we're out here to create a great planned community within the town of Groton, I think that's really the positioning, you know, that we need more than anything. Now, with that said, and I know Jeff, you're a skier as well, you know, Okemo, which is, you know, one of the big resorts in the east, was really, the whole town of Ludlow was almost choked off by development. This is what Hal was saying, when they put in a development called Jackson Gore with 300, 400 plus units and the rest of the town suffered because of that. So while I advocate for a great planned community, I also believe what Hal said is very important is that it needs to have a balance to the rest of the community. Sure, we can create something great there, but great does not mean huge. And I think that's the balance that we need. The two last points are, I thought that Deb and Bruce, both in our last meeting this week, they gave some really good explanations. Deb, I think was on Wetlands and Bruce was on what the quality of life meant within, in relation to the, to the regulations. And I think, you know, if I was a citizen, I, I hadn't read it like that, you know? And I think Bruce was very articulate in what he said regarding that. And I think as we go through this process, we have to remind as citizens, not only do you get a, a say in this, you, we, it is a strategic vision that yes, quality of life is very important, but it's ruled by the regulations, ruled by the black and white. And I see people, just in my six months here or something, they cross those lines all the time. And I think, Jeff, in leading off some of these discussions, where we have public comment, if we can take some of Bruce's words from the last meeting, I think we would be, you know, in very great shape. My last point, similar to what Steve and Sue said and Barbara, you know, I'm not locked into those buildings. If, if we have a trade-off based on money, a 900 units because I had to, you know, uphold the historic nature of those buildings, that's not a trade-off to me. That's not a great planned community. That's a bad trade-off. So I'm willing to trade those off if it is a, a better size for the, our entire community, for our Boulder Court, for all our neighborhoods, if those are not included. And that's all, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thanks. Yeah, I just had a couple of thoughts. That have, I think, look, you have to look at the site itself. It's one of the few areas that exist in the town that has a lot, large area. And then whatever goes in there, it would be nice if it was something that needed to have maybe a larger, larger area, something like a resort hotel, maybe with, isn't, maybe that's a bad example, but something that might have just a few buildings and take advantage of the green space. Or have, have a part of that ridge line area where you can oversee a lot of the river and down toward the mouth of the river is open space, maybe in development inland and have a mixed use type development. And I sort of agreed with the thought of downtown Mystic. I thought if this place were just planted on top of the shopping centers down there, it would be great. It would be ideal for it and it would really fit in where whatever we do has to be compatible with the existing neighborhood and the existing community to maybe more concerned with the impact on the total community. And I thought tonight would be good to get everybody's thoughts to see if we want to sort of put them together. Or maybe we just agree with what's, what's been written and rely on how that development is controlled. And I also am not too enthralled with having to maintain the buildings unless that's something the state insists on doing. And we have to recognize also the cost. If we maintain those, those buildings and rebuild a Pratt Building, that's very expensive. And to get access to the Pratt Building may be very expensive because you have to put in a new, new road, probably to town standards to get the public in there. If you want to open it, since it's so far back in the property, that it may not be realistic from a developer's standpoint to be able to accommodate the development and the cost of rehabbing and cleaning the, the space up. I don't. What I thought we could do tonight maybe is go over and agree with the use table is what it is.
Mr. Chairman, could I make one more?
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Comment, if you don't mind?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. I, my, my internet is going in and out here. As far, just two, two things, the Pratt Building, I think that it would be worth everyone listening to or reading the architect's report on that, that was presented to the town council three or four weeks ago. I, I don't know how, how that building is, is going to be rebuilt. It seems like that building also needs a lot of work. And, and it might be more than what it's worth. The, the other buildings, as far as I'm The, the other buildings, as far as I'm concerned, don't have much value, other than maybe the cupola. You could pull that down and maybe put it on something else possibly. I mean, really, those buildings are only visible from the river. And it, and from, you know, my experience walking through it, I touched a wall in the inside and with my pencil, and the parging came down at my feet. It's, the building is virtually collapsing on itself at this point. So I, I don't, you know, certainly doesn't seem like it's worth trying to save them, but then that's it.
Do we have a, a cost estimate from the developer on how much the Pratt building would cost to rehab?
Well, I don't, we really shouldn't be getting into the cost. I think we should just say it's allowed to do either tear it down and recognize that you have to to build another one or to use the money somewhere else. I mean, they're the ones that are going to have to make the determination as to whether they can afford to rehab the buildings or not. That's my feeling anyway. I don't want to get into any financial aspects.
But we can hear.
Amount of flexibility to develop it.
I think though, the, from the developer's point of view, the cost really is immaterial. They're paying for it with number of apartments. It's, you know, we could have anything we want. We've been told that multiple times. It's just the number of apartments goes up, you know, depending on how many little goodies we ask for. I also wonder if we would put a swimming pool in that place if it, if it wasn't there already. So knowing the condition of that building is critical, I would say. Because I, I don't think that that's would be in the best interest of the town to put a pool up there. That's just me.
One thing we can do with this meeting is, because I'm hearing kind of agreement, I, I also could care less about the historic buildings. I, I looked at them and thought, no, these are just old buildings. And having had, I'll, I'll just back it up a little bit. Building number one at the submarine base was building number one, nineteen eighteen. Sounds really important. The historical association came and said, it's just an old building, just tear it down. We, we saved nothing. I'm, I'm thinking of it with this thing too. I don't care if it has some significance philosophically or not. It's, they're just old special use buildings. And maybe that's one of the things we can advise is say, we, if we all agree, just say, we don't require keeping them. In fact, we think it's might be the opposite of what we want to do. Maybe we actually would rather get rid of them. With regards to the Pratt building, maybe we don't care. It'd be nice to have, it's so expensive to build a, a very large pool building. It might be worth it, but that's, that gets really into the weeds and that's not our thing. So maybe we wouldn't mind having it there if it's cost-effective. That's what we can say. The other ones, I, I think we just as soon, if they're a problem for the site, then we just as soon as I got rid of them. And I think it would be a lot easier to build on that site if they weren't there.
Well, that's a pretty important decision, really. This was my feeling is that they're not, they don't have any architectural value that I know.
And I think I'm hearing agreement. I think, does anyone think it's actually worth keeping? I like the idea of keeping a couple. It's always nice to keep a piece of it.
You want to keep the cupola and if there's a plaque for the building or keep that. Information.
Sell the doorknobs.
And the lamp fixtures.
There you go.
And, and take photos of it if it's, so people have it, but.
Have some walkways that remain, whatever, just so you have some little historicity, but let's have some, some nod to what was there and then leave the road name and then be done with it.
Yeah.
So I just want to clarify, I'm hearing that you don't want to require buildings to be saved. Do you care if they save them? If they can figure out a way to do it, you know?
Well, I, I think that's the type of latitude has to be left to a developer.
That, that's what I'm thinking too. So you just, we're just going to take out the requirement that they save.
Requirement to save them unless they were a health issue or a safety issue.
Okay, yeah, and the developer can make the decision on their own. Okay.
Which makes sense to me.
Great, thanks.
To make it sure that the developer wouldn't get any extra credit for leaving them. I don't want them to think, oh, the town will like this. Not particularly, so.
One other thing I want to bring up, having nothing to do with the zoning, but more logistics. If anyone is ever having some internet connectivity issues, a really easy thing to do is to disable your video. And that usually helps your communication coming through. So I think one or two people had said they sometimes have some connectivity issues tonight. So if that's something that you're having a little trouble with, if you stop your video, your feed will come through, at least voice a little better. And again, this is all very good feedback. Understanding what it is, what your goals are for the site. Because, you know, again, as we were working this through a process to try to find a developer, which is what the state and town council process was and not necessarily, in, in getting a, a, a feel and a vision for the site, items were identified as part of that of, you know, what the state wanted to happen on the property, with the town council and others going through that process that were important to those involved. You know, there was a public outreach meeting before we even released an RFP as part of this project. In trying to get some of the feedback and concerns from people, we heard a lot about traffic. We heard about the benefits of the Pratt building. And I know the commission doesn't want to get into finances, but reusing the Pratt building and renovating that is a substantial cost. And that, as well as the ring road, as well as the roadway through the property across the street, the Fertleski property, those are all things that are substantial costs to then try to take traffic off of some of the other local roads, which then, you know, caught, drive the cost up, it drives the density up. But I think that's something, again, as the commission gives feedback on what's important and what's not, we can, you know, the developer will hear that and they can modify their proposal as, as necessary.
Well, I just don't think we want to get into the actual dollars. We should just recognize it is a large cost and it would impact or eliminate certain developers. I think it, because you're talking millions of dollars probably for to put the ring road in, redo the Pratt building and you know, it's, and you've got to clean up the, the site too.
Redoing the Pratt building alone will end up being north of ten million dollars.
Oh, that, wow. That's why.
You know, we don't have hard numbers yet. In the near future, more numbers will be coming out on some of these things, which, you know, does help give an order of magnitude for some of these things. But then, you know, when you start talking about parking garages, so there's not area that is surface level parking, taking up area. I think a single parking stall right now in a, in a structured garage costs about thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars. So, you know, again, it, those things add up quick. And that's the, the tough thing with having density in areas where you don't want to have, you know, anywhere, a lot of surface level parking, you know, with, with the development that you have.
But even when they put in Three Water Street, it would have cost them thirty thousand dollars per space on that type of a, an arrangement.
So there, I don't, they elevated the building over that. So, so that's not, I, I wouldn't put that into the true structured parking, but if they started building a parking deck.
When you put them on top of each other. No, I was just surprised at the cost, but I can see it if you're doing a decked pro, project, you got to have pretty good, strong structure to support it.
Yeah. No, and, and you know, it, that gets into, you know, there's a lot of reasons. Are we consistently trying to direct growth and development, not to get too far off topic to downtown Groton? Yes, the town has been trying to do that for a long time. And I think we need to look at keeping that pressure on trying to move things downtown. But we also have to wait for willing property owners to do that. And if we do that, then to then the detriment of other development in areas where we want to see development happen in town, we see that development go to other municipalities and things not happen here. But they, you know, again, we're looking for direction to get the right growth in Groton in these areas.
All right. So I, I don't know if people have any thoughts on the, on the use table, whether it's necessary to go over that. Or perhaps we made enough decisions, which surprised me tonight, to where we can just go over this matrix that we have. Not tonight, but just go down the items and resolve any of the issues that way. I don't know what others haven't thought or the staff hasn't thought of what we should do.
Oh, the idea of going down it a little, somebody's got, I, I, I like the idea of just going down what we can. We've got another plenty of time left to go here. Unless somebody's got some other comments. I mean, I was noticing things too, but I can just send them in if we want to stay on one task and go.
I like just matrix. I think we should go straight down that, fill in those gaps, use as part of our template for the PCC and continue along that process.
You think it's worthwhile starting tonight or like the first item is density? And I think that's that one is, is a long discussion on how we handle that, unless you just want to say we want to reduce or have a more realistic density level right now. I don't have.
Is there some way to just bound this problem so that we're not talking, you know, in the extremes?
For what density?
Yeah, just, you know, just would, some kind of brackets around it and say, well, it's between here and here at least. We know we don't want to go beyond because that's bad.
We certainly, within the zoning, can set some parameters. You know, again, just trying to understand the direction of the commission, because we're hearing, or, you know, some of these density numbers might be too high. But then we've also been told, well, we want to keep flexibility. So that, you know, to, to make it work the right way. Right now, the way the regulations are written, you know, Rich Cody spoke about this a little bit. All of these items are really set by the commission at the time of the master plan application. And that would be done concurrently with the zone change to land the zoning. So we can allow certain things through the regulations, but you don't have to approve them. And, you know, to some extreme level. You have to approve a master plan. And that's not just, oh, well, if we get an application, we have to approve it. So there, there's a lot of flexibility that you, the commission, have the way the regulations are written. But if there's a cap or a certain number you want us to set as a, a, a top number, we can put that in the regulations or we can adjust some of the density numbers. We just want to get some clear direction. So we're not just shooting in the dark either.
You're asking for a finite number or.
Or a range. A range, something, yeah.
Here's my point. What's our comparison though? So if you gave me a comparison, I'm just picking between Columbia, Maryland and Reston, Virginia, and the rest of Groton as far as density. Wouldn't that drive the number? Otherwise, aren't we just picking a number? I mean, why don't we find a quantitative approach that we're willing to live with based on our ability to see other places in town or, or comparable developments? That's what I'd like to see.
Well, we have other apartment places, complexes that have been put up in the high two hundreds, three hundred range.
On, on the same land? Is it the same?
Maybe we want more open space here.
Right.
You know, that, and we don't want to have it sold over once, the, the neighborhood or the community.
I would also say that some of the places that Hal referenced earlier, Country Glen and the Ledges are in our downtown already. And so that we're comparing apples and oranges as far as locations go. So the density. And then also I'm wondering, does it, I mean, does it have to be multifamily apartments only? Or can we look at other kinds of living?
The way this was written so far, it said you can do whatever is allowed in the RU eighty area, which would be single-family buildings. It would just be at a denser level. And that, I guess you would want to specify by numbers, but it would be a lot less in the apartments.
Yeah, no, I understand. I'm just, you know. I don't know.
That's absolutely, that's absolutely correct. I said, you're absolutely correct, Jeff, that as written, you could have all townhouses, you could have cottages, you could have mishmash of all the above. So we, we do not specify that has to be all multifamily.
So it would really be the multifamily that we'd want to limit on density probably. Or eventually you'd want, if it was going to be single-family, you might want to specify the size of the lots.
The, the only other item I would point out is comparing what's being proposed here to the Ledges or Country Glen. Those developments were built twenty, thirty-plus years ago in some of those instances. And the product here is going to be very different, designed differently, a lot less bedrooms. And I know that they were trying to not do, and see, you know, something we're encouraging, I think, in a lot of our newer development, to try to avoid a lot of surface level parking.
Well, would it be similar to what the Perkins Farm Development or in Stollington across the river?
I, I'm not familiar enough with that development.
It looks like a huge, huge apartment building. I think it's more like the ones in Groton. You know, it's around three hundred.
Um, no, they're only at like one forty or one sixty, Jeff, right now.
Oh, it's that small?
Yep.
But they're townhouses.
Yeah.
Yeah, and they have a lot of land too. And open space. Remember, fifty percent of their property is open space.
Yep.
Was that special zoning ring they put in?
Yeah, well, that's what I was wondering if we're going to a lot of housing, that maybe we want to have a higher level of open space. But I don't know if that's. Tonight, we should just put down a max, that we have to agree on a maximum amount for multi-unit.
So one thing to keep in mind with open space percentages. So half of this site, as it exists now, is going to remain in state ownership. So right now, the site, I think, is approximately of what is owned by the state, about seventy-seven acres or so. And the developers are going to be getting about thirty-seven acres from the state.
Yeah, but I would think the thirty-seven acres is what we're looking at. But I, I thought on the, when we went around the property before, there are some areas that would be nice to leave as open areas so you can see down the river. You know, which might, and you, maybe you want more of an open space feeling and more of a cluster-type housing development. But I don't know that we'd want to specify it necessarily. But maybe for tonight, maybe we should just say we want to just establish a limit, maximum limit for multi-unit development. If everybody thinks that makes sense, I'll come out with a number tonight.
I don't think it does make sense because I can't compare it to anything. So while John says some of our old developments are not comparable, okay, what is comparable? Let's have a picture in our mind, what we are trying to get as far as.
Let's not determine that number tonight.
Okay.
I'd rather, rather, to what you're suggesting is, is that maybe we have a better feel for it, but at least getting people to think about what's realistic.
Sure.
I think the Perkins Farm, if you haven't seen that development, it's an interesting one to look at because it is close to the highway and all that.
I'll have to go closer to it. Built that new medical building up there.
That's right. That's right. And they're generating about a, I think it's a million dollars of tax to the town, so.
What, the building?
The whole pro, the whole complex.
It's real, it's early, I, you know.
Yep.
Maybe that's what we want to duplicate that.
It's Stonington too.
And they just, they just didn't go far enough. They didn't build any really great town associative features with it at least yet. But they did a good job to date as far as what they have, right?
Are they? Yeah, I haven't really looked at it closely.
Sort of like a checkerboard approach. There's a thing over here and a thing over there.
Yeah, that's right.
Doesn't really tie to what else is going on.
That's right.
Maybe it will.
Alright. So we'll leave that sort of as an open item for, we understand what we have to do. The next item on the list was a building height limit. And we had big discussions on that subject recently. I, I would think you'd want to keep the, the height down to. More what we see elsewhere in the town, maybe thirty, forty foot. Somewhere around there, not go up six stories or anything.
Yeah, I think I agree with that in that I, I think in zoning, we always had the argument that would come up from time to time that. People buy into the neighborhood and sometimes they bought in there decades ago. And they're used to a certain maximum and having certain views and open, you know, an openness or not. And um the idea that you wouldn't all of a sudden go from whatever the height of the oral school mean billing is up to a hundred and twenty. Um, you know, would be uh something to consider, I think strongly, you know. And that fits into the P O C D too, keeping the sense of neighborhood and all.
Right. I don't think you want to have skyscrapers.
Right, exactly. Exactly, um, but the topography there too, it's not that. Um, maybe you can do something, but I haven't, we haven't seen that yet. Anybody able to do something without a hundred and twenty feet or something? And that would be a hard one to hide, I would think, even on that site.
Yeah, but if you build it on the side of a hill, you mean, you could have.
Right, and for that issue of flexibility, I mean, the way we've written this now, our intention now uh is that. The building heights are based on uh where they can be seen and how far away they are from existing uh residential. Um, the thought being, take care of uh those views from the existing residential buildings first. Uh, also, since we last met, we did add a caveat uh that makes it very clear that the PCC. Uh, would be able to again, look at those three D models uh which you requested the last time we got together. Um, and you have to be satisfied uh that the perceived uh height and view from um. From neighbors, from other important view sheds uh would not be compromised. Um, so even though. Theoretically, this allows for these greater building heights, um, it really is. More so that you can play with that topography and um. If you find that it is acceptable, that you can accept it. If it is not acceptable to your satisfaction, then uh you would be able to say, I'm sorry, no more than thirty five feet.
I think there's kind of an in-between there and that's in terms of how it's perceived, since I've seen some towns that did this. Usually seaside type towns where right along where the viewpoint is, there's buildings that are two and a half stories high. Behind them are buildings that are four and a half stories high behind them or buildings that are six or, it looks like it's a hill. All you see is two-story buildings, one on top of the other. It's a complete illusion until you get in there. But it's kind of harmless from outside. The only way to describe it, I mean, even if we look at a model, we're not going to see that unless we get down on the ground and look at the model. So that might be one of the things that, but you, you can kind of write that in somehow, but. Good wordsmithing on that. I'll let you, let you try that one. But it is something that we'll be able to say to make sure that one of the submittals includes complete site sections, including buildings. And then you will see this sort of emulation of the hillside, even though what you'll see is a two-story building. That the three-story or four-story building will be hiding behind it and so far up the hill. We can't see that until you do a building section, a complete site section from every direction. So I think maybe we could, I'm not all in favor of having very tall buildings, but maybe I won't know that they're there if they're hiding behind lower buildings. Some of that has to do with how far away from the lot line it is, which is the way we have it right now. But more as often as not, it is more to the total topography, how high the road is there. So you have Boulder Court, that's almost an easy one to just has low buildings and some shrubs and some burming. Nobody was talking about bringing up a berm. So that will completely hide the buildings. Um, from other directions, maybe you could get away with it, just don't want it popping up above the tree heights.
I just added eighty feet, eighty feet, I think is what the regs currently have in there as a tentative and it's, that doesn't sound. Doesn't sound residential to me.
That sounds too high to me too. And I'll, I'll say that it's eighty feet from where. So I would be careful about that. If it's dropping off the side of the hill and you're measuring from the bottom of the bottom hill. Which is what they were saying, maybe it's not as bad as we're thinking because as you climb up the hill, it's only forty feet tall on the top side of it. So might want to have some kind of definition there. What, what are they talking about? If this thing is really just climbing down the hill and it appears to be eighty feet. But it's only a forty-foot-high building on the other side. I, I think I give them some credit, otherwise we're going to have just kind of very low buildings crawling up.
Yeah, the way I measure them right now is by the midpoint on the grading.
That's it. You just say, if you just say it's forty feet, then maybe it's not so bad because then you will have forty-foot-high buildings climbing up the hill.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, we're.
They were presenting rectangular buildings on in section, and maybe they shouldn't be. They should all be kind of stepped as you go on.
Yeah, that would be an interesting.
Yeah, Hal, I haven't been on the subbase for a while, but I'm wondering. If uh, aren't there buildings like that at the subbase? It seems to me because that's so silly. That you see two stories from the front, but in the back, it's like six stories.
There's a couple of them like that, five stories on one side and three stories on the other side.
That's what I thought.
Al, I would throw out there that I, I think that what you said, the, the tree height is what you said. I heard you and, and that is prob. Probably something that, like for me, if I look up at the hill and I see buildings that are towering over the trees. Then that isn't a residential, that's a high-rise. But if I, if the trees can mask it, hide it in some way, or they can hide among the trees. Then that's uh probably a, 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 a good place to aim for. To me, would seem like that's, you know, and then when we have trees planted around these buildings, they're going to get lost in the. In the forest. Meeting my dinner, so. Don't have to look at me.
Which would mean around here, what, eighty foot?
Could be, could be more.
It could be more because we have oaks that go up to a hundred, but are, are kind of mass line for the, for the. Our makers and like birch, they're around eighty feet, ninety feet, that kind of thing.
Oh, sorry, yeah.
Oaks, keep going.
I don't know.
I don't want to go there.
Alright. So we got to attack that problem.
Well, so then just to kind of bring that back together, um, so we have some direction. If folks are comfortable with the height of the trees. And maybe what we do is take out the um other section that goes to setbacks and going higher, if that's something that. Commission members are uncomfortable because I, I do think the language that Jeff Davis described, again, gives you, the commission, the discretion. Looking at buildings as they're designed as part of that master plan to show how they blend in with the hillside and the trees. So if we kept the eighty-five feet. And if that's consistent with the height of what trees are out on the site, again, looking at grades. It allows some flexibility, but it doesn't mean that you have to allow that number. It's just what someone can bring in based on a master plan design and when they show architecturally what is there. If it's something that meets what the commission is looking for, great. If it doesn't, then you tell them to back it off.
I guess one problem with tree height though is um we have mostly deciduous trees around here. And so you'd have half the year, like you'd have a really big building you can see.
Yeah. Feet seems awful high.
Yeah, so be careful about the height with a tree.
But a lot of these views that we're talking about, like they were saying, you up the hill, but a view from a distance, you're looking through. A pretty good filter of, of branches and, and trunks. So you're right, you can make it out, but not very well.
Yeah.
You say though that eighty foot, if there's a central thoroughfares that take you through, if we're going to actually get some streets out of this. I don't want an eighty-foot building right next to the street. I don't care what the tree looks like.
Yep.
So back, back to the, the, the step kind of thing, what's right next to the road, maybe that shouldn't be. That should be held at forty feet or fifty feet and let the eighty-foot building be partially hidden by the building. From the road.
Yeah, and I would hope in Mystic that we had something different from a monolith block that would be eighty feet tall. It would have some architectural detail that maybe the peak of it might be, um, and I wouldn't go eighty, but I mean, maybe sixty. And then, you know, take it from there that the, the rest of the building would be, um, you know, substantially underneath it.
We can put a coupla up that high.
Yeah.
We have one, we have one.
Yeah, we have the cool flow. We just need the building underneath it.
Yeah.
Or we can have the penthouse there. So I guess we have a few alternatives that we got to pick from for building height, but. Something we want to keep that's. Not out of.
Well, again, is it possible to just bound it a little bit? Can we say that sixty is a, is a target?
For tonight, we could, yeah.
Yeah.
Want to try that?
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah, just say sixty.
I'm agreeable to that.
Alright.
Sixty feet as a, a hard cap regardless of topography and screening?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it would be measured per our definition of height, so that would take into account some topography because you do an average. You, you, you measure it from average grade or.
And roof design.
Right, that's right.
So if it's a peak roof, it's actually higher, but that's okay with us.
Right.
You know, well, that's good because you have variety, I think.
Yeah.
Alright. Next item is sewer system capacity. I think that's relatively straightforward. Do we just have to make sure there's enough? Capacity supposedly the plant is adequate, the piping size may not be. Next one, retain off-site view of existing main building. We already discussed that. And next one is define riverfront development. That one's up to the uh developer, I would say. Unless we want to specify something that has to be done.
Well, what does that mean exactly?
Well, I think this came up with people who were concerned, how do you get down there and how much of the riverfront will be developed? Which is that where they're talking about what's the uh parking lot down there now, where there's a little boat launcher, kayak launch.
So the state, the state's boat launch, yeah.
Yeah.
And, and that property will remain in state ownership. Any development that happens down there will be, you know, done in agreement with, with deep. Uh, improvements to the boat launch. If there's a, some type of a walking path down the hill, that was something the developer was looking to do.
Right.
But it's really a developer thing.
Would, would there be parking allowed on the other side of River Road from the boat launch?
I don't know what's there.
I mean, that would be subject to, to, you know, discussions with the E P. That would still be their, their property.
Yes.
I don't know how much of that area is right of way because it, it seems like the road is enormous there.
Um.
I know it's, when they come, come around there on a bicycle, suddenly you can take a breath because there's all this room, so.
I'm not sure that, I'm not sure there's that much right of way. I think it's just, you know, trees. Yeah, yeah, but, but to this point, I mean, is this something that you want to require?
Like what, what do you mean?
I mean, do you want, you want, no, do you want to require improvements down there as, as part of a development?
I guess it'd be interesting to hear what the state thinks might be feasible there. Um, and that sliver of land, you know. They're pretty good with boat launches, so.
Yeah, I think, I think the discussions just happened whether the boat launch could be improved and, and whether or not some sort of trail can come down the hill through the conservation area.
Yeah, I thought they had a rights to a trail. They have to define it. Or you might want to just pave the parking lot down there. Isn't it all dirt now?
Yeah. Well.
Turn gravel.
Yeah, it's mostly gravel. I think some of it is just kind of broken up. Might have been paved at one time.
Shouldn't that discussion be like more in the master plan as opposed to the zoning?
Um, you know, things are just questions that'll come up. They.
Okay.
Certainly have to be in the zoning. Or the M E C.
Yep, we can handle it through the master plan, absolutely.
That's probably where it makes sense, you know.
Yeah. It's like sewers and, you know, those kinds of things. Those would all be uh, you know, more project specific. Because if somebody wants to put in a dozen houses, you know, they can do it now and we wouldn't even be discussing half of this last.
Right.
Well, I, I think that if someone's intention is to be using that. Facility in a more, you know, significant way, then improvements need to be made to it. Like. Uh, Steve, you just pointed out, I think that it also is, you know, something that would probably be addressed at a later date.
Okay, the next item was uh views from off-site properties. Are they limited to back of buildings and parking lots? That would be in the master plan, I would think. But there is.
I'm not sure what you were asking there.
I, no, it's what the people were, so I'm asking. Trying to summarize the question. I think people from the Boulder Court area were concerned if they look up the hill, what are they going to see? And I thought there's some words in here in the document, may, maybe wrong. That sort of indicated that you just can't have plain uh building frontage or back part of the building views. You have to have some variety and. Do things in there to sort of break up the long, long line of even surface.
Okay, so in other words, the design guidelines need to apply all around the building and not just in the front of buildings.
Right.
Right, and I think, I think another concern that I heard was, you know. Are, are we as neighbors only going to look at not just the back of the building, but are we going to see just the parking lot, just the dumpsters?
That's, that's what they're talking, right.
And I, I think also uh was mentioned that when that circle drive was put in, that it, that people had the feeling that. The whole project was moving east more than what they had expected.
I think that might be one thing that I, one of these, a, a section through the site might alleviate just because the reality is. The circle drive, I can't imagine any angle that you'd be able to see paving in a circle drive up on top of the hill. From anywhere down below, even on the top floors.
Yeah, I think it was more to do with traffic.
I, I think, and I don't think that they'd see, they would see trucks. I don't think they'd see the tops of the trucks and if they would, then that might be a thing where. The section would show that they need to put a little burming up, not shrubs, because that doesn't hide trucks. Uh, traffic is usually line of sight. That's the, the worst noise is line of sight. So let's need to. Make sure those angles are right. I was thinking they're also thinking of parking structures because they're talking about a three-story parking structure and would they see that? And probably the angles were such that they, they wouldn't, but that's something that would be revealed in the, with the section.
You'd have to have the actual plan, yeah, to see that.
But aren't we taking care of that um to some extent by changing the maximum height and density too? It wouldn't be so crammed up and I think there was a fear of having the big building, you know, on the back wall.
Yeah, I think that's when they saw the, the number of stories and. Yeah, I think that's when they saw the the number of stories in that parking garage.
That's right.
Apartment complex on top of it. That's got them nervous that what does that really mean?
That's just with this plan that we're looking at, if somebody was to put fifty foot high building much farther out, like where the edge of the ring road is now, then then they'd see it. So that is something we want to.
Yeah.
They could see and maybe we can, maybe we should be defining what they should see from down below.
Yeah.
Could one story or one of the half stories sticking up above? Or nothing.
Yeah.
They could see nothing. There's enough property to make it so you should see nothing, but I don't know if that's required.
Yeah, well, if you or if you use that space as open space in there, they wouldn't pay much. And some of it might be, if the Pratt building isn't a used, you may not want the ring drive either. Or it could be in a place, could be in a different place. The buildings aren't there. So it could be quite.
Yeah, I think that's a good point though to um, to think about that because then if it went through a process where there was a public hearing, they'd have the opportunity to, you know, say something in an opine because I think that's one of the biggest sticking points.
Yeah. Oh, it is. Well, it's good to have, keep that in mind for when you review the uh, project. Solid waste disposal, I don't think we have to talk about that.
So just jumping back to that last section, again, just, you know, trying to get direction for how we move forward. I think a lot of that will be dealt with at the master plan stage, and I think a lot of uh, some of the changes you've already suggested dealing with height as well as there are some pretty extensive buffering requirements and setbacks on the site that Jeff has written into this document.
Exactly. So our intent was again to start from the perspective of the existing residential uh, homes uh, abutting this property or near this property and my my goal, again, based on our initial conversations with you all, was to try to base the height and the buffers and the setbacks on what the existing residential uh, properties are going to be able to see. Uh, if that language needs to be strengthened even more, then then we'll look into that.
You know, these things are based are really on questions from the public has raised based on the Ressplard proposal.
Right.
In in existing that, so some of the you know, realistic in the whole, in another type of a development or meaningful.
And and you know, I I think we all recognize that we don't want offsite um, existing houses to be looking at a a blank brick wall through their backyard right in front of them. Is it feasible for no one to be able to see anything? That's probably not feasible. Uh, because if that was a standard, we'd have very little development happen anywhere in this town. But I think through adequate buffering and setbacks, we certainly can minimize those views and I I don't think the intention of the plan or the way the regulations are written is that people would only be seeing back of buildings, lights and parking lots. Uh, again, commission has a lot of control over that at the master plan.
Yeah, I think it was more the concern of what they see, not that you can't see anything. They don't want to just see car parked cars.
Yeah.
Apartment buildings, when they build them, the backside is just a plain brick wall. They want to, I think, have some variety. I don't know how late people want to go with this. Maybe we should go to later clock.
I thought we agreed.
Next item was.
Two hours. Thought we agreed it would be two hours.
Eight thirty?
Eight thirty, I thought that's what we said.
Alright.
I think that's what we'd said.
I already have my shoes off.
Okay, the next item is identify requirements for preservation of existing buildings. We already discussed that. Pratt building improvements, somebody wanted to retain the theater. I think that's really a town council requirement or wasn't there discussions on that at a recent council meeting?
That's just going to come down to the money, I believe, right?
Yeah, it's a, you know.
Nice idea, but it's so so costly.
Well, it's also costly in the town's part. They got to maintain the facility too, which means a lot extra employees.
Well. They were gonna uh, proposing that what I saw the last architectural plan for the Pratt building included uh, many smaller spaces that would be used up there for programming. Which um, I mean, it's it's not as if that that's gonna, I mean, and regardless, I think Parks and Rec is gonna be having a big presence there. Whether it's a theater or or, you know, just spaces as well.
Alright.
The the thing is that there was pretty unanimous uh, consent among the town council that they were. I mean, I, when I went up there and I saw that building, we toured that theater and people were, you know, pretty excited about it. And I think that it sort of uh, was a surprise to me when I heard that that wasn't included in it in the plan. But uh, apparently it's driven by whether we discuss it or not, cost, and it was mostly parking and how and how you get that parking because the only way to get to that parking garage was through the theater essentially is the way that they had designed it. Was to have a, because it's higher than the than the Pratt building and that they wanted to have a, like a causeway that went right through the building from what I could tell. Which is probably why we're getting numbers from John in in the in the north of ten million dollars.
Well, I I think that number and renovation is going to be whether there's a uh, sorry, whether there's a theater or the kind of flex space. And that's an issue that the council has, you know, directed us to do uh, more work, working with Parks and Rec, a survey on what with the end use, what's the community looking for for an end use of that building and that's going to help, then that's going to drive what happens there. If there's a theater versus uh, flex kind of rec space, it does demand more parking. So in that I think um, you know, for purposes of, you know, what we have at the use table right now and the regulations, that theater is allowed as is um, recreation space.
That theater was not particularly enormous, was it? How many seats is it?
Three hundred and fifty, give or take a few.
So it's kind of a nice in-between size compared to what we actually have. But is three hundred and fifty surface parking spaces that slightly used, is that out of the question? Is that too bad?
Thirty thousand dollars apiece.
When you start, yeah, again, it gets into, we could go down a a pretty deep rabbit hole here um, on this one, but.
I'm I'm just saying if it's if it's if it has to be a parking structure, I agree, it's too expensive. But I'm not sure how many surface parking spaces is too many. We're not certain, we're not shooting for zero.
Yeah.
We don't mind if there's some. We always were going to have some out there and I don't know what percentage it is. We just want to have less.
Yeah, I I think the concern with the theater from a parking perspective is just some of the peak time use of that peaking at other times and it'll just necessitate more overall parking. That was one of the concerns.
Yeah.
Has there been any discussion as to, like, if there, I I know that uh, when we put in the recent submarine memorial on not by the life everybody there, there was a committee that actually studied the best location for that. Is is this the best location for a pool? Does anyone know that?
I'm trying to remember, my daughter wasn't swimming at the time.
No, I I went up there for many, many years. I mean, with my kids.
And so did I. I think it's a terrible location for, it just happened to be there.
No, I know that. So I mean, I just, that's, that's why I think, like, if we're pursuing this, the cost is a a concern because, I mean, if it's north of ten million, far north of ten million, then maybe, you know, maybe that's not where we want to buy a pool, but um, I I guess I I'm not on any kind of a position to make that. Uh, but you know, I I feel like we're sailing in the dark here at some level and we don't know whether or not we're even gonna it's practical to even keep that building.
Well, remember the pool was heated and most of the people that wanted to use it were those for therapy and things like that. It was not a good pool for swimming. I don't think ever, but it was the location was a possibility, but it was.
The new design for the pool.
That was considered far out of the way. So I don't know, well, I don't know what the intent was on that.
So one of the things that that is difficult with this project is that I I think, you know, a lot of people are looking for a lot of different information and and level of detail that it's hard to design and put that level of detail into something that they don't know what the end product could potentially be. So even coming up with these costs and and orders of magnitude of things to design and get those cost estimates cost a lot of money. You know, right now the town is going through a process uh, that's being led by our Parks and Recreation Department to do a community assessment of recreation needs around the town. So there is something that's happening around that in getting uh, determinations for what the community is looking for. That's something that's happening. Uh, Parks and Rec, there was a presentation to the town council about that uh, three, four or so weeks ago. If people are interested in that and want to hear a little bit about that. And that then also talked about, you know, the Pratt building and how what uses can be there. So trying to understand the the level of the design of and or the cost of some of these things at this point is is kind of difficult. I think what we need to do as a town or, you know, the the commission is set a framework around what type of development you would like there. And then once that is possible, we can then understand what can be done on the site, what the possible costs and the remediation of those things are going to be. And then that's going to drive what can or can't happen at the Pratt building.
You know, well, so some of these things aren't really under the planning and zoning purview. Like this, what goes on with the Pratt building, I think it's just people want to know and they've asked us what the information is or what the, what's going to happen and we're the only ones they can address. So there are items on here that really don't go into writing up the uh, the requirements. And I think that's, the Pratt building is one of those.
Yeah, and you know, people can't address questions to the council, uh, to our office, to Parks and Rec. Uh, again, that gets into, there's a, I know that there's a lot of questions um, that people have about the project and right now because it's it's still a vision. There isn't even an application and and that's something that, you know, we can't stress enough. We don't have the specifics on you know, things along those lines. Or if, you know, after tonight's discussion and as things move forward, what is the future of the Pratt building? I don't know. What is the future of the Oral School Building? I'm not really sure. If historic preservation is not that important to the commission, there's a lot of cost to the renovation of remediation of those buildings.
Right.
So I think, again, as you set the framework for the zoning, that's then going to influence a future master plan.
Right. Yeah, some of the, you're right, there's some, some of these you can't can't answer. I didn't want, this list is intending to record all the questions we have that we can answer tonight or until we have further down the road. It might be specific to the actual uh, project that gets submitted. The next item is schedule for remediation of environmental issues. That would, that would be the phasing and the next one is phase of develop, phasing of development. I think the words that we have already just identify the need for phasing and and how to control it.
I think it's in some of the underlying documents, this whole phase. Yeah, the developer has to.
Right.
Detail of phasing.
Right.
Within that, it says a detail of phasing, but the, I'm not sure what the direction he has. And the only reason I I bring that up is that since the plan that we had, he said, this isn't a phasing plan. He just kind of waved his arms as to which building we're going to be done first. And within that, he was going to do some substantial number of apartments first. And a hundred percent of the traffic was just going to go back north on Oral School Road to get to it and he was going to improve that road. I'm not sure we ever liked that plan. We just didn't evaluate it because really wasn't the plan. It was still just up in the air. But maybe we need to be more specific about what improvements need to be done in which phase.
Well, that comes when we get the actual plan. Yeah, we would accept that or direct it. I don't think you put it into the regulation. It's just that they have to have phasing and that's either it's okay or no, you have to get more done.
Yeah, you can address that at master plan stage, I think. And and your work to amenities get um, constructed with types of units and I think through the master plan, you guys are in control.
Yeah, it's like a subdivision plan or where there there's phasing involved in that. We say you have to have this much done before the next building can be occupied.
And we all know how easy subdivisions are.
The thing is, for me, is that I want to make sure that 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 there there are certain parts of the phasing that are included in part one, which would be the environmental uh, you know, any any concerns that there there are several. I I know of at least two historic dumps up there that have to be dealt with and and I would not want to see development occur unless those things were taken care of in in, you know, right from the get-go.
Yeah, or some of the stuff would have to be bonded to make sure.
Well, there you go, but.
Backs out or doesn't complete it, or you don't let them have a occupant certificates of occupancy issued until they're done.
Yeah, so that's how we've got written currently for things like uh, the transportation improvements, the utility improvements. Uh, it's another reason that we invited the Illinois Wetlands and Conservation Commission uh, to be part of the uh, pre-application meetings is to catch all of these things early. Um, and yeah, I think to read it, what Jeff has said, the important thing is to give yourself the authority uh, to make these requests in the uh, master plan phase.
Okay, next is uh, limit M E C boundary to school property. And I don't know if anyone has any concerns with that or not.
Well, was that the concern that the, that what was it, the Ferguleski property, property?
That's right.
That when we talk about density, that does that encompass that property? Or does that revert back to the old, whatever it is right now?
Well, it's whether you include it as part of the M E C or not. Or just stay as as it's currently zone. I don't see a problem with putting it in there.
And right now, there is one other state property locate, that's part of the M E C property located on that side of the road. And also that Fertleski property is the property that that kind of main road going out would then be built. So if you don't include that, then it's going to be hard to get a a better roadway to access the site.
Right, but I think originally Ressplard said that that was just going to have the road on it. It wasn't going to be developed and then that changed. So there was quite an intensive development plan for that property.
Yeah, all those new units that showed up on that property, that that was not there in it originally.
Right, they were different.
Yeah, I I I'm, you know, I'm trying very hard not to um, defend their plan, uh, but just from a historical perspective, when they showed the first master plan, they did not have that property under contract yet. It was something that they were working on, so they didn't want to show a roadway through there and some of the other properties that they've acquired that they were working on to address the very loud feedback they heard about traffic and not wanting traffic to go on the existing roads as much as possible. So that's why there wasn't a lot. If anything, I think the original master plan that everyone saw had nothing on the Fertleski property because they didn't have an interruption yet.
Well, no, but he had said that was only going to have a road on it because we asked specifically. And then that changed, so.
But does it make any difference? Because you still have the same restrictions. Because you still have the same restrictions on deployment as to whether it's enclosed or not included.
Yeah, right, but that's something I think we need to think about too.
It's, it's seventeen acres?
Yeah.
Right, sixteen and change, that's right.
Yeah, so Jeff, in answer to your question, I mean, I just did some quick math. Right now, they're talking about, if you have eight hundred and fifty, eight hundred and fifty units on thirty-seven acres, I mean, that's twenty-two units per acre. And you're talking about, you know, that would be applied to that new property also. But if we reduce it, then the reduction takes place on both of those properties. You know, but it's certainly more than what it is zoned for right now. Well, wherever we end up.
Well, everything's more than it's zoned for now. That's what the whole thing is about.
We still would have the protections that we're putting in in terms of view lines and of buffers and things like that, you don't keep it too. So as long as that's written carefully enough, the property is only as big as it is. And if we can only see so far with so much buffering, that will tremendously limit what he can put on there, maybe even more than he's got it now. Even though I think he just had townhomes in that area, right?
That's just. We're falling into the trap of.
You're right, it it's not necessarily.
When we were, I think we're falling into the trap of where we were um before, when we were assuming that this was absolutely going to be the development that we saw. And that I I would like to see this kind of, if it's going to be multifamily contained in some way. And I think that that would do it. And I think that actually the proposal that we saw with the townhouses there in that area maybe gave it a little sort of a buffer, but um if you're talking about, you know, just making it so that multifamily could be put in there as well, then, then I would have an issue with that.
Well, the townhouses are multifamily.
Well, but I mean, not the, not the kind of boxy uh high rises that we're seeing elsewhere.
Well, I, I think we're basically saying we can't put in bulky high rises.
And again, that's something that you, the commission, have the right to give the thumbs up or thumbs down at the master plan stage. And if what you're looking for is you'd like that townhouse style of housing there to serve as a transition, well, I, I mean, I, I think that's, that's clear. And if you don't want the bulky high rise there, when someone comes in with the master plan, you can tell them that very thing.
Well, so isn't there an argument to be made that we were talking about redevelopment, approximately forty acres initially of the Oral School? And then this other large, larger piece here, the sixteen point three one that Ressplard has there. There's an, I would think there'd be an argument to be made that that should stay under the original zoning. You know, it's right next to a bunch of houses and everything too. I I'm just playing the devil's advocate, but I think that's.
An RU forty, Sue, or do you, or is that an, is it an RS twelve? What is that?
It's RU twenty.
RU twenty, thank you.
Yeah, so keep the RU twenty, which is flexible and fairly, but that would be an idea too, to really maintain that because that's uh, that's kind of sticking out there and it affects a lot of neighborhoods also.
RU twenty across the street too, right, on the other side of Allen Street or Cow Hill? Is that RU twenty?
Uh, yes, it is. Um, the Fieldcrest neighborhood is RS twelve, but the area around it, um Mystic Highlands, for example, um that's RU twenty.
Everything south of Cow Hill Road is RU twenty thousand west.
So the consensus is to leave it.
What is Boulder Court zoning?
RU eighty.
Yeah, RU eighty, which is that whole other area.
I had the impression that they were on smaller lots than that.
Yeah, they are two acre lots there, aren't they?
No.
They, that, yeah, the RU eighty is a relatively, relatively new zone in the eighties. Um and so Boulder Court may have been developed before um that area of town was RU eighty.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure.
Those are definitely smaller lots.
Do you want to leave this decision till later?
All about the density.
Well, no, I mean, it's just for the density, how wide does it go?
Yeah, I'm in agreement with Sue.
On what?
I, I would like to see that remain the way it is.
Yeah, RU twenty is fairly dense.
Twenty is?
Yeah.
A little annoying, that's.
I live on Jupiter Point, it's our, I don't know, our five down here, I think.
Have a McMansion on that.
Uh forty foot wide, a hundred foot long, that's the lots.
I'm on twelve myself, so.
You on stilts yet, uh Mike?
No, won't be long though. No, not yet.
So, I don't know. You think we want to leave it as is at twenty?
I'd be okay for leaving it at twenty at this time. As a buffer.
Yeah, a buffer, exactly.
Yeah, okay. Ring Road buffer for noise.
And all the above.
That's part of the uh.
Yep.
I think as much to me is an aesthetic transition.
Yeah, well, that's part of the acceptance of the master plan, I think. Stormwater management, that's just normal. Appropriate, is appropriate use, uh nursing home or hotel, that's one of the items that are on the uh use list for this area. I don't see a problem with that. His historic actions for Oral School.
I was just backing up on that, please, is that as much as the normal thing would be to say, okay, we'll put, we'd like to put nursing homes out there by themselves. The boonies surrounded by trees and it's kind of backwards to what is a good place for a nursing home generally. To be isolated, so I suppose it's okay if it's part of a development, but not if it's the development.
Well, that's what I was talking originally about having primary use and secondary use.
So I would say if that's a, that's a perfectly good secondary use, but it makes no sense as the primary.
No, well, the same with the, yeah, the hotel could go. Your hotel could just be by itself in a lot of open space, put a golf course or a croquet course or something there. But the nursing home, you're right, it might not be a primary use. But there are other things on that list that probably would not, you wouldn't want them as a primary.
Now, most of them don't lend themselves to being a primary use, nursing homes sometimes happen that way.
Well, it could be that big, yeah, but I don't think we want that.
Jeff, Davis, um are we actually calling out nursing homes or is it residential life care communities? Because residential life care communities are actually allowed in the RU eighty zone now. And and nursing homes are not, and I'm, I'm thinking it's not nursing home so much as residential life care, which is, you know, active adult and assisted living and all of that.
Right, although in, in this current draft, we have added nursing facility as uh my, so, you know, that is and we can either nix it or we can say nursing facility as I don't know if we consider it an accessory use, that's probably not the right terminology, but.
It's not a primary use.
Yeah. Although I don't know that we have a definition of primary use in the zoning in this context, so we just have to maybe like with other things, limit the number of beds.
Yeah. I think the next item was historic actions for all oral school site development, that's just something people have asked, how did we get here? But next one is uh the ability of town use of outside experts to evaluate development requirements. I thought that was in the regulations.
It is, it it's in the body of the, the existing regulations, yeah.
And then we had the developed site as a park. There is one, two people have asked for that, I think. But I don't think that's realistic.
Half of it is. Half of it is.
What, half it is a park, so.
Yep.
Success, half is.
Actually, plus, if you include the town lane.
Lot of it, huh? A big area.
Yeah, with the town and all that, the river.
Yeah, yeah, it's all down there the river, right? But it's not a P and Z issue. Then the off-site concerns, I don't know if we really want to go into those or not, but they don't, I think they'd be all master plan issues because they're all off-site.
Well, they also asked for traffic studies that are in here.
Yeah.
And that might be, that might be one comment I actually had as a note, which I don't know where I did it, which was to make sure.
Our traffic study related issues.
Right, and and generally the traffic study from, my experience has always been you bring in a traffic engineer and he says it's okay. And if it's not okay, puts in a traffic light and he says now it's okay. And then he's done. And then we're, we're stuck with whatever that is forever and certainly in in some level on, within a campus, when subbase campus, I'd have to say, well, it is okay. So you're backing up for another five minutes, so tough. That's just the way it is. But one of the things we should have is what the actual impacts are. They're not no impact, so depending on what it is, maybe we've diminished the size of this, so it really isn't a problem. But if you put in a traffic light or have existing traffic lights, what is, what's the backup time and stacking? Those are the technical traffic terms. What are they before and what will they be after? Because if the answer is all, we'll put a traffic light, then it'll be okay. And now I find out that now every time you go through that, you have to wait for two or three cycles to happen before you get through the light, then that's not the solution. And you need to do something more.
So we do have uh the traffic impact study uh as part of the uh application materials where you do ask for existing projected uh traffic counts at major streets uh adjacent to the area being rezoned, analysis of anticipated traffic to be generated by the different land uses proposed, including projected levels of service and queuing key intersections. Uh so again, if you're looking through this and there's anything like, we need more information in order to make an informed decision, uh like this is where we put it. So, again, I'll be have to answer this question now, but uh that's another one of our tools, uh is if you feel like uh we need to make sure our traffic impact study requires the developer provide us this information so that we can make an informed decision. This is where, this is where we can do that.
Actually, that's where I was kind of looking at, I missed the idea that you had queuing in there, but I guess part of it is, what is it before? And what is it going to become kind of thing? Because the traffic counts, none of us has an idea of how traffic counts should be and can be and what, what a flow through an intersection is, and they're going to come up with those. And we're supposed to be an R layman on that subject, so if they say it'll go from five hundred to five hundred and fifty cars per, per day, we don't know how that, what that real impact is. What happens there? So, and if they say it will be negligible, what is negligible? So it comes out easier, the thing we can experience is what are the times of waits? The queuing is a, is a good thing because queuing is, is how many stacked cars. But then how much time does it take to make it through that intersection and not on average at the peaks?
Yeah, level of service.
Yep, level of service at peak hours, yep, absolutely.
Okay. And then there are three items were on that. Uh, the next item is inadequate pedestrian and bicycle access to downtown. And I, I actually measured the dis, the distance uh from the southwest corner to Bank Square and it's one point six miles, not one mile. So I don't know whether you'll see a lot of pedestrian traffic or not.
But is there a plan?
Well, it's offsite, I, I don't know who would pay for, if we got to put in sidewalks in the missing areas.
I was, I was, actually, I was thinking of the um, oh, both bicycle and I guess walking too. Maybe by the river, was that going to be the plan? They put the route down there into downtown?
A lot longer, you aren't going to walk along the river. If you wanted a dark, lights, I wouldn't want to go on a dark path. Snunks would come out and get you.
It'd be nice though to have a plan, I think. I was just saying, I think it'd be good to have a plan for pedestrians and bicycle, any other type of access to downtown. Is it feasible? Um, where's it going to be? How's it going to flow into that? I'd be curious.
You've got state, I mean, you've got roads, paved roads to get down there.
That's what you'd be on.
What, you want to put signs up?
They couldn't put a bike lane, especially going down Allen Street, I mean, that's why.
Yeah, well, you wouldn't want, you weren't going to go up to Allen Street, I would think.
No, I was going to go by the river.
But which becomes High Street and go down that way.
I suppose so, but the grades include getting your bicycle back up the hill if you take, go down the River Road. You can't go back up that hill to this development.
That's right, yeah.
The only way you're getting back up is going up Allen Street.
No, go up Cow Hill Road and Oral Street, and you got.
You'll cap, what's the grade on that? You're not a man that I am.
Well, I mean, it's the same, it's the same height difference, except you're going up on Allen Street is a lot higher than you have to go to get into the site.
But it's over a much, much longer distance.
To go Allen Street.
Yes.
Oh, I know, but the shortest way I would think would be to go down Oral's School Road to Cow Hill Road, which changes into High Street and then down.
I, I, I absolutely agree going down that way.
You still got the much staying amount of height to climb on a bike.
I know.
So it'd be easier to climb up to High Street than it is to go up all the way to.
Okay, that might be true, but not from River Road.
No, oh, you don't want to go up River Road.
Not River Road, which, which is kind of, they were pushing, they say, oh, we get you down the River Road, it'll be delightful. No, you can't.
I, I absolutely love these conversations.
You can go back on River Road and then go up Pinless.
You gotta have one-way street, one-way street on River Road. No pedestrians going into town.
That's right, that's right, put a bike rack at the bottom.
I think this is, this is, this conversation has been very telling as to why the density needs to be limited in that, you know, where we are being told that this is going to be a pedestrian friendly and bicycle friendly development, I think it's going to prove to be uh difficult and, and is going to make the parking problems that we have already in our beautiful little village nightmarish.
Yeah, we can run a ferry service from the, from the boat line down there every half hour though.
Yeah.
I'm buying their Boston Whaler and take you downtown.
Except if we make this a little bit of a town center, a town neighborhood center, then we're not pushing everything toward downtown Mystic.
That's true, but then it would have, have to be kind of self-sufficient. I don't know if you can get there.
There was no pro, no concept that would, that would exist, though. When you really looked at what we're going to have is a convenience store and a little bar and restaurant. And that's what was going to be in.
Queens, New York. No, that's, it's what every neighborhood in Queens has, they have a little convenience. No, that's, it's what every neighborhood in Queens has. They have a little convenience store and a restaurant, right?
Yeah.
So does that lead us, is that what led us to nine hundred plus units? Maybe. Maybe that's not right. I think that's the point.
So I don't know what we want to do with the pedestrian bicycle access.
It's going to have to be addressed at some point. Allen Street doesn't even have a continuous sidewalk.
Right, does not.
And and the thing is, is that well, the thing is, is that we have to, as a commission, realize that we're going to be making these demands now on other developments that in the past we've let slide. For instance, the Firehouse and Mystic River Ambulance, those two places in particular, we didn't require them at one and put it off on another. That's, so what, who's really going to bear the cost of these sidewalks because of this development is going to be Mystic River Ambulance and the Firehouse and anyone else along Allen Street that is doing anything is now going to be, put that demand upon them.
Well, I always expected that, though. I mean, we were, we were kind of regretted the ambulance property within a month or so of having put it in. We knew that was going to come up. As soon as we wanted to develop that intersection, we knew we'd have to put the sidewalk in. There's actually the extra issue of finishing up a sidewalk on the overpass, which is extremely doable, but that's to extend that eighteen inch or two foot curb that they've got and extend it out another couple feet.
Yeah, there's plenty of room there.
Right, that's state property.
Yeah, we have to have them do it. We're not going to do that. I mean, the state do it. They they can't put a sidewalk on an overpass.
So you just want to, what should we do with this? Just have a plan for it or?
Well, I mean, we we don't, we let the fire department not put a sidewalk in. We we told them they didn't have to do it at all.
You mean the old Mystic?
Yeah, and the, and the Mystic River, we demanded it of them, but we put it off for five years. And that kind of, you know, I remember Ray was very upset about that, that he felt as if it was, you know, not a good decision to make. But I think that we weren't at that time anticipating development north of I ninety five. Now we are. And so I'm just, my my point is, is that this, the costs of this development include someone else now where we didn't demand a sidewalk. Now, if the Mystic River Fire Department came back, we would demand that sidewalk of them. And they would bear that cost, whereas before this development, not. And so I just, in the back of our minds, we have to keep that, you know.
Yeah, but I think there's more missing sidewalks in that area, isn't there?
There, there's a, there's a, that the whole length of sidewalk probably needs to be replaced.
Or it doesn't exist.
Yeah. Asphalt and broken pieces and grass in some places.
So by the time this development gets done, the five years will be up for the Mystic Ambulance.
Well, it's only two hundred and ninety feet or three hundred and ten or something like that.
We'll have Ray out himself.
And Ray, Ray still won't. How to do it?
No pedestrian should be there. He just thought we should stop, streets would be there, so that's.
I think the thing is, is that it's, you know, a, a, an entity that probably should be, that sidewalk should be paid by someone other than the Mystic River Ambulance Company, I I feel, but no, that's that's another, another day.
Minor issue.
Town will pay for it. And then last item on the third page, impact to emergency services, fire and ambulance. I don't know if that's a concern or or they just get notified.
Fire Department usually reviews the plan.
Right.
Certainly well-located.
They're right across the. All right. And the last item on that section impact was the next page, impact to school system. I think that's sort of turned into, well, with the current development, it's minimal. If we put in regular housing, it might might be significant. All right, it's eight thirty almost. Does anyone have anything else that we should discuss tonight?
It'll wait.
I I have an unrelated question, not to the Mystic Education Center, maybe Deb, the Three Water Street. I can't, you know, I was down there getting my health food at SIFT and.
Donuts.
Raspberry chocolate croissant, oh.
I could not help in noticing that there's a power lines right across the street, right in front of the building, which is what I think was the very reason why most of the central hall burnt down because of fire trucks, you know, could not get a ladder against it. And is, is, was there anything in the plan to move those power lines?
No, there was not. That's, that's right at the area where the the Streetscape One project stopped, where they were burying the power lines. Yeah, yeah.
We were so adamant to make sure that Streetscape project
Yep.
did not create that problem anymore, but that's one of the things that we definitely have to watch for in the future. Because having a building that close and next time you're down there, take a look at it because I was surprised.
That's right where phase two of the Streetscape project starts and burying the utilities was not part of phase two. Well, yeah.
But you do have access from the backside.
That's true.
From the parking lot, sorry.
The new Bravo Bravo is the exact same problem, even probably worse as the, as those wires practically draped across their windows.
Oh, really? It's that close?
They took off their little balconies, they had to take them off.
Oh, they did?
We were so adamant with, to make sure that the Streetscape buried the wires. How did phase two get away, you know, get around it?
Cost. Really expensive.
Million dollars a mile.
Really expensive, yep.
Where's phase three?
Yeah, we're still deciding, but there, there will be a phase three.
I thought they still.
Some point. There's a little bit of money left.
Now that Rick Norris has nothing to do now that the sign is squared away on the high school.
So we are getting a little off topic for what's on tonight's agenda, so sorry to be the.
So if no one has anything else, then I'll make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Second.
Second, okay.
Thank you, guys. This was really helpful. Really appreciate the effort for everybody to attend.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
A little effort.
The town, town staff had their entertainment for the night.